Welcome to the Falmouth Chamber of Commerce. The Falmouth Chamber is dedicated to working on behalf of our members to make Falmouth a better place to live, work, and conduct business. We are committed to developing the economic, cultural, educational, and civic interests of our community and welcome the support from all organizations to achieve our combined goals. Whether you call Falmouth home, are a summer resident, or a visitor, we hope you take advantage of all that the Chamber has to offer.
Nestled in a classic New England setting amid 200-year-old elm trees and charming colonial homes, stately sea captains' homes, and charming Cape Cod salt boxes, Shoreway Acres is a graceful blend of Cape Cod's past and present. Shoreway Acres, proud sponsor of Falmouth Community Television.
Green Harbor Waterfront Lodging is nestled in a woodland setting on a picturesque ocean inlet. Green Harbor offers a family waterfront vacation. Enjoy our private boating beach with dock, rowboats, and paddle boats, oversized heated outdoor pool and kiddie pool. Relax in our waterfront and beachside accommodations. 548-4747, or gogreenharbor.com. People think that a locally owned and operated appliance store may not offer what they need. Actually, we have trained and dedicated sales associates, expert delivery and installation, professional repair service, and personal customer service. Plus, we have access to a huge local warehouse with over 6,000 models in stock. Crane Appliance, we call the Cape'n Islands home. Carlson Printing for all your printing needs. 508-548-7303, or toll-free at 1-800-696-7303. Our email address is carsonprinting@al.com. Carlson Printing for all your printing needs.
Hosting services for FCTV.org are provided by Meganet Communications. Meganet offers a wide array of internet services including mega-backup cloud service, server colocation, T1, fiber, metro ethernet, as well as telephone services such as hosted PBX and digital voice. Their number one goal is to keep your communications network up and running and allow you to focus on growing your business. 877-634-2638, or meganet.net.
The Quarter Deck Restaurant located on Main Street in the heart of Falmouth, specializing in fresh local seafood and other classic American cuisine, featuring a full bar with friendly staff. And the Bucatino Restaurant and Wine Bar located in North Falmouth just off Nathan Ellis Highway, featuring catering services with two full event rooms serving up classic Italian cuisine. The Quarter Deck Restaurant and Bucatino Restaurant and Wine Bar, we're here to serve all our friends in Falmouth.
To the June 4th Board of Selectmen meeting, I'm gonna call this meeting to order and I would ask you to join me in a pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Any announcements from anyone? I know we just met on Monday.
I don't really have anything and nobody else did. We just asked.
Great. So I'll also ask for, if there's anyone here for public comment, and just a reminder, because I know we have a number of folks who have joined us, public comment is for folks to make a statement about something that is not on our agenda this evening. During public comments, we will hear from any individual for a period of two minutes. And we can't respond to you unfortunately because it is a public comment period and the specific subject matter of your comment is not on our agenda. Mr. Johnson, stop. Could you tell us if anyone is here for public comment?
I have no knowledge of anyone being here for public comment. We want to just give them one minute to chat if there is a public comment.
Absolutely. While we're sort of setting the stage and we'll give them a little bit of time, I'll note, and please, anyone else from the board chime in. We did receive quite a few emails today. No one who was specifically asking for it to be read into the public comments. Just a reminder while we're in this sort of new world, you know, we are conducting this meeting under the governor's order suspending certain provisions of open meeting law, Mass General Law 30A, Section 20 relating to the 2020 novel coronavirus outbreak emergency. This meeting, as has been the case for the last couple of months, is being held remotely and we are making opportunity for public comment in a number of ways, both by people joining us via the chat feature on Zoom and also with individuals being able to send comments into us in advance asking that it be read during public comment. So just a reminder for folks out there who don't feel comfortable joining us via Zoom or maybe aren't able to join us, please, if you want something read into the public record, send it to any of us in advance and just be sure that you specifically say you would like it read at public comment. And again, it would have to be something that's not on our agenda. If you do want to comment on something on our agenda, you can certainly write into us and ask as well that it be read during the period of time we're discussing that particular subject matter. I did see one message come up, Peter. It just comes up briefly. Could you just let me know if that is something appropriate for public comment?
It is not something appropriate for public comment. It is related to the subject matter that is on your agenda tonight, so we might want to read that when we get to that topic.
Sure. Okay, thank you. That's what it looked like. Great. So it doesn't look like we have anyone here for public comment. So we can move to the business at hand tonight, which is further discussion of street closure, outdoor business seating, temporary licensing, and other issues related to COVID-19 reopening. So we kind of have a lot to cover. Sam? You're muted, Sam.
As I say, we have two issues resolved. One is allowing restaurants to do outdoor seating. And then the second one has to do with street closures or rerouting of traffic. And I was wondering as a matter of order of business whether we shouldn't deal with at least permitting restaurants to apply for outdoor seating because there are other areas of town besides Main Street that may want to use that option.
I believe, Sam, that actually what was supposed to be submitted to us was in fact a protocol for all businesses in town to be able to apply for outdoor seating. So that is in fact under temporary licensing and other issues and outdoor business seating. Thank you for your point. It really pertains beyond Main Street to all restaurants in town. And then the procedure for that process. So yes, we are going to address all of that. So if we can just perhaps start with the first part, the street closure. You know, as I noted, we received, let me just actually back up. So it seems as if when we had the discussion on Monday, this board had actually been talking about what to do and relief to be able to grant to restaurants on Main Street for quite some time. It had been on another agenda. We had talked about it quite a bit, talked about some possible options. We've been working pretty heavily with the Chamber who had submitted a possible proposal that was then looked at in detail by fire, DPW, and police. And what often happens unfortunately is that it doesn't seem as if there was that much attention being paid to the subject matter until we made our vote on Monday because suddenly we had really quite an outpouring of communication from mainly retail shop owners on Main Street today. Frankly, before that, I think we had heard from two shop owners only with concerns about street closure. So perhaps it just wasn't on people's radar. But I will say process-wise, one of the reasons why we usually try to have these important matters on a number of times on our agenda, at least twice, is to gain some of that public awareness usually gets into into the enterprise, onto social media, to hopefully if people aren't looking at agendas or paying much attention, hopefully it garners some attention and input because this board really can only make good decisions when we have a lot of input from the community and from the people that those decisions are going to impact. Unfortunately, for whatever reason, we're in the middle of a pandemic. I know people are worried about a lot of things and maybe not paying as much of attention as they normally would. We've kind of got the process, the information on the back end of the process. So one of the reasons why this issue is on tonight is obviously we had directed on Monday, we had voted to have a portion of Main Street closed. We asked Town Council to draft the necessary documents to effectuate that vote. And as I noted, in the interim between Monday and today, we received a lot of input. And so I'd like to open up the discussion to hear from members of the board about whether we need to reconsider that vote based on the fact that we heard quite a bit from individuals on Main Street, both shops that were very concerned and number two, we've actually heard from some, as late as this afternoon, some restaurant owners who indicate that they don't anticipate that they are going to actually utilize any space if we were to make it available. In fact, by my count, I think we have maybe only two restaurants that have indicated they anticipate utilizing the closed portion. Here, we're just talking about that closed portion that we voted from Walker Street to Shore Street, Shore Street Extension. So given the fact that it sounds like not many businesses are anticipating utilizing that space and all of the concern from retail shops, I'd like to just ask for the board to have any input and concerns or thoughts that any of you have. So sorry, long-winded introduction, but I want to make sure everyone's on the same page. Doug Jones.
I guess I'd like to at least reconsider one amendment to it if we don't complete, abandon the whole idea. And that would be whether we did a hard closure at Shore Street Extension diagonal to Panus Stroller from Barbo's and a soft closure coming down Shore Street Extension so that fire trucks could get down that street to those restaurants, which would then allow us to do the hard closure at Library Lane also. So we would just be closing off part of the street between the other side of the library.
Okay, I can say maybe Doug Brown, I don't know if you want to speak to it, but I know that that was one of the suggestions. Another suggestion that was raised, and I do believe Chief Dunn, he's not available because he's actually dealing with issues around sort of some protests, not here in Falmouth, but towns are assisting each other to make sure all protests are peaceful and that people stay safe. So he is doing that this evening. There's been a lot of mutual aid going on between departments. But he did speak with me earlier today. He is available via taxi, step away if need be. But I think he said that he didn't find that to be a good recommendation. And I don't want to go into the details because I don't want to mistake what he said, but he was very concerned about about that idea of the diagonal blocking and maybe someone, maybe if Julian or Doug Brown has more detail about that, I just don't want to misspeak. Doug Brown, you're muted.
I was gonna say I think Julian wants to speak on that.
Okay.
I was just gonna note that Chief Mike Small is with us, so it might be helpful if he's brought into the conversation and might be, might care to comment on that directly.
Okay, great. Good evening, Chief.
Howdy.
Did you hear that? Did you hear that part of the conversation?
I did. That, you know, that proposal is basically trading the access from Library Lane and moving that access over to Shore Street Extension. You know, I don't want to speak for Chief Dunn. I think he's going to want to weigh in on this tonight before you make a decision because I know he's got very solid ideas. You know, it's certainly something that we could do. In order to do so, you would need to abandon all of the parking there and you would need to turn that area of Shore Street Extension with numerous Jersey barriers in order to force traffic to serpentine so that nobody could have a head of steam up and, you know, gain access out into the closed-off area, you know, it would, for lack of a better phrase, it would look like a dentary control point in Afghanistan. I mean, you would have to, it would have to be numerous Jersey barriers staggered in order, you know, to cause traffic to slow down. So that's, you know, we could work it so that we could get there. I don't, you know, it's trading one for the other. But again, traffic control is more Chief Dunn's issue than mine.
Yeah, thank you, Chief. I think he's here.
So that's, you know, that's my, I don't want to speak for him. That's something that could be considered. It would be challenging for us to have the fire engines be serpentine-ing through there. But ultimately, you know, the traffic flow and the traffic control issues, I don't want to speak for him, so.
Thank you. No, I really appreciate that. I think he is actually on. If we could bring him in, I do believe that he's been able to. Thank you, Chief.
Good evening.
Were you able to hear the question about the parallel closure? It's the idea of the sort of angled closure by Shore Street Extension. Doug Jones, if you just want to reiterate your, I don't want...
I'm sorry, I didn't, I just got it on.
Instead of closing offshore street, west of Shore Street Extension, closing it a little bit east of Shore Street Extension so that Shore Street Extension could be the emergency access to that part of the road for the library. And then we could close off at Library Lane instead of having to go all the way to Walker Street.
I really don't think that's going to work. And the reason being is Library Lane is not that wide of a road. You're gonna try to direct a lot of traffic down that road. It's not going to be safe. And you're gonna have people coming in and out of parking lots and everything else. And if you're going to close that off for Library Lane, that first Jersey barrier would have to be somewhere down by Maguire's front door in order to get people to turn that because you have two bumpouts there on that end. And then on the other end, you're gonna be shooting all that traffic down Shore Street.
I was okay with the Maguire's front doors. I thought that was a perfect place for it. So I'm okay with that end of it, so.
Well, and then again, on the fire department side, where is the, where are they gonna get access to those buildings themselves?
Coming down Shore Street, if they went different street to Catherine Lee Base to Shore Street Extension, it would be about the same as doing different street, Shore Street, different street to Library Lane. So from the fire department, it seems like it's about the same, really, from the police departments where I have more concern.
Yeah, I mean, we've walked that. We spent a lot of time going back and forth. As a public safety piece, I just don't believe it's going to work.
Good enough for me.
We spent, I mean, we spent a lot of time out there walking it and really looking it over and, you know, over the years, we've had closure on Main Street for events. And the way we've closed it, it's worked. It's worked safely for everybody and that's my concern.
Thank you. Doug Brown, you had your hand up?
Yeah, I just want to say I've talked to one of the delivery drivers who's just really scratching his head about how this whole thing would work if it was a permanent closure. He suggests that if we were to consider closing it maybe during the afternoon and at least allow the mornings for deliveries. So I'm kind of backing up from my vote from Monday. I'm thinking maybe for the limited amount of response that we have, maybe we should table the idea now. I wouldn't abandon it completely, but just say that at this time, it's not enough positive response and a lot of negative response. And until the positive at least gets close to catching up to the negative from the business community, I just don't know if it's worth it at this point. And also, I talked to a restaurant owner in that vicinity today and she said she wouldn't be buying any tables and setting them up, just gonna wait it out and because, you know, she's lost a lot of money already and then she's gonna put out a lot of money for outdoor furniture. And then she's gonna, what is she gonna do with it at night? Is it gonna get stolen? So I think a lot of people have those similar concerns. I had suggested maybe renting something inexpensive, but she was just one person that was just not interested and she knew of another business she'd already spoken to down the street who said the same thing. They're just gonna, they're not gonna bother with that.
Another alternative is a way that we can make the parking in front of these restaurants if they don't have the facility to serve at tables and they're gonna continue with the curbside pickup. If those parking spaces use as regular parking, they're not gonna be able to have cars pull up and get their stuff. So another option is if we don't do the closure, maybe we need to at least close those parking spaces as live parking, and they can only be live parking and they can't be permanent parking.
And that's something that I think we could, you know, definitely take a look at and certainly is a little bit less of a heavy lift than all the Jersey barriers and all of the barricades. Sam?
Yeah, I've struggled with this whole idea of rerouting traffic. There's just, there's no elegance to it. It's not a natural pattern for people that are coming and going. And so when a couple of the restaurant owners, managers basically said they would just as soon continue with takeout but would welcome picnic tables on the library lawn, that kind of made me say, you know, I think we are really trying to do something that's gonna be very difficult to pull off. I think Doug's point about making it temporary parking only for pickup makes a lot of sense. But I wanted to throw one more thing out because I know with picnic tables, we have the issue of sanitation and how do we keep them clean? But I grew up in Maryland, the Chesapeake Bay area, and that's, we're famous for our crab houses. And one of the things that they do is they spread brown paper across the tables and they bring out the crabs, everybody picks them and there's a huge mess at the end. And what they do at the end of your seating is they just simply wrap it all up and throw it in the trash. And to me, that would be a way of maybe taking care of sanitizing the tables. Now, there's some other policing that obviously has to go on, but that's something that maybe the town would consider it. I mean, it's like the people that we employ for beaches for the summer, it would be a hard time kind of thing. But, you know, it's just a thought that came to mind, but it would at least give the restaurant the opportunity to have walk, you know, people put their orders in, pick up their orders and then walk across on the the library lane lawn and enjoy eating out there. And that might encourage a bit more business for those restaurants.
Yeah, and I think that's something that we can put specifically on the agenda in an upcoming meeting to really get some more details on that. I know we've talked about it as a potential and there are, I believe there's some new guidelines about the fact that they do need to be cleaned between every, every use. And so as you're saying, Sam, we would need to figure out who's responsible, if that's gonna be someone from the, you know, from the town and how we staff that and work that situation. We also, I believe, have to petition the library trustees. Is that correct, Julian?
That is correct. Yes, you have, you would have to apply for authorization to go forward with that.
Okay, so we can...
But don't forget, don't forget my first point, which is basically I think this is just too complicated and obviously we don't have a groundswell of consensus on whether this is a good idea to shut down, essentially shut down Main Street and turn it into more of a pedestrian and restaurant seating area. So I'm inclined to rescind our previous action.
Yeah, it sounds like that's where, it sounds like that's sort of the sentiment of the board. As I noted, you know, it is just sort of the, it's just sort of human nature that sometimes we get the information we need after the fact. And I think there, the, you know, the communications that we had, it looked like there were a lot of communications that went on between the business owners on Main Street that never made it to the Chamber and then never made it to the Board of Selectmen. And I think there was maybe some confusion by some of those individuals and they thought that Michael Kasparian was on the thread and they thought Board of Selectmen was on the thread. So I think folks were surprised that we entered into our discussion, you know, as we did on Monday because I think they felt that there had been some sharing of that information. But certainly we've, you know, we've gotten that information now in the last couple of days. And for me, the biggest piece is that we just don't have a lot of businesses, restaurants, saying that they will make use of this. So if we had, you know, if everybody who was in that, owned a restaurant in that block and a couple of blocks really wanted to use it, I think we're back to the conversation we talked about on Monday, but that's not what we're hearing. So if that, Sam, is that a, I'm sorry, Doug Jones, go ahead.
Yes, I would love to leave on the table the possibility of a shoulder weekend where we actually try this as, so not related to COVID right now, but I still love the idea of shutting down Main Street and bringing all the restaurants, having their tables come out as a new public relations Chamber of Commerce activity that we would do in the fall.
Great. So maybe that's something, I mean, I would say there's a real role for the Chamber to play in getting some more consensus from the folks on Main Street and maybe beyond, but particularly on Main Street. Just, you know, maybe working out how, if there are other suggestions that businesses have or for something like that, a fall event, Doug, where it'd be kind of an exciting shoulder season event that they get some sort of buy-in from, from folks. I think that would be great. Anything else from the board about this subject? Yes, Doug Brown?
Just wanted to say I did watch the planning board's meeting Tuesday night. They too were kind of surprised that, you know, we took that action and actually didn't get the referral from them. So they did share their views and actually it was, a majority was against the closing because they researched it previously and found it wasn't suitable for downtown. So I just wanted to share that as the planning board representative that they were not very supportive of the idea. And they were a little disappointed that they hadn't been more included, so.
Top, Peter, stand. Yeah, Peter?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask the process question. As you know, we, we got a lengthy comment through chat that was intended for this portion of the agenda. So I don't know if you wanted to have me read or one of the members of the board read that. There were two others, I believe, subsequently on this topic as well.
Great. Who asked to be read into the public record or just wanted to be? Okay.
Well, I take it as comments relevant to this subject sent via chat during this time in the agenda. So, and again, as Chair, you're not obligated to read all of these into the record just as in a regular open meeting, you wouldn't be obligated to allow public comment. But I wanted to be sure you were aware that it's there and at the option.
Yes. Yep. So I will, let me do this. Before we take any kind of vote, I'm gonna read what we have. So we have a comment from Frank Paratutanuto, I'm sorry. That's really small font for me to read. I apologize if I mispronounce your last name. All right, it says, "Dear Selectmen, the vote on Monday's meeting to close Main Street from Shore Street to Walker Street was the right idea to help our town's restaurants survive in the face of COVID-19 crisis. However, the decision is terribly mistaken because it only helps those restaurants east of Walker Street. It does not help the restaurants west of Walker Street. In fact, it gives an unfair competitive advantage to some restaurants over others. The reasoning that some restaurants already have some outdoor seating is misguided..." The reasoning that some restaurants already have some outdoor seating is misguided. A quick count of the comparative number of potential seats will clarify this. There is no reason not to close Main Street from Shore Street to Post Office Road. Please reconvene as soon as possible to correct this error. Thank you for giving this your attention. Please reply to this message to let us know your thoughts about extending the Main Street closure to Post Office Road. Sincerely, Frank and Sheila Caratunuto. And that's from 38 Henrietta Road, East Falmouth. Okay?
And I could just add to that, that-
Yes, go ahead.
I think I've seen a lot on social media and other comments, and a lot of the public is in favor of this. It's a nice feel-good idea, but it's not something that we can force on business owners that feel it's putting them in jeopardy. So I just wanted to, you know, kind of respond to that, that I feel like it would be great too, but I don't have anything at stake there other than it's part of my town. So I think we have to respect the business owners and their decisions. They know what's best for their business.
Well, I think also, Doug, it's a good point. I think also, the fact is that we're hearing that not a lot of people want to utilize it. So again, if there were some, I understand that not all businesses are, you know, going to want the same thing all of the time. And so what we were hearing very clearly, and I'm not sure what changed, or some voices were sort of outweighing others, but what we were hearing as a message before we took this vote was that we really needed some closures. And I know the, you know, the closure recommended was a lane shift, which was not acceptable for many public safety reasons we already discussed. But we were really hearing that a closure was something that, that businesses were asking for, that, you know, the restaurants were asking for. That is obviously, you know, changed or kind of been reconsidered. And so it's a different, it's a different bit of information than we're getting. So I think your point is well raised, that if businesses are saying that they're not going to utilize it and it could harm them, then we have to listen to that. So I'm just going to go back for a moment to some of these other comments. From the pickle jar, what about opening the public bathrooms and/or having some porta-potties? We've had a tough time with takeout and people asking to use the bathrooms. Let me just read all of these, and we can go back, just so I can get out of the chat screen. From Kate Rickard, hi, Dan. This, I guess, is just a letter she wrote to Dan Maxwell that she wants us to read. I agree with all of your points. I have also wondered about rainy day. And if we are intense, isn't that the same thing as being inside? It took a detour Thursday off of Main Street that was pointing traffic to the farmer's market, which looked to have more pedestrian traffic than Main Street to me. I think people are going to come out en masse and are going to want things to be much as they remembered. I think people are anxious and routine is comforting. I think it, that makes it harder for me to launch a new brand. I think the least amount of change we can do is best. I think restaurants would do best with all takeout service. Instead of town funding cement blockers and detour traffic, maybe they could fund tables and sanitation. This was a letter I drafted three times this afternoon to Dan Maxwell. Since I heard you listened to messages sent through chat, I thought I would send it along. Okay. And I believe that is the last, that's the last comment that I see at this point in time. Okay. Anything else from the board or from either of our chiefs or?
I think that's a great question. Is there a timeframe for opening those restrooms? Because it is a pretty inconvenient.
Julian, go ahead.
Yes, our plan has always been to open restrooms consistent with the opening of outdoor restaurant seating. So that would be this coming Monday, June 8th.
Great. Thank you. Anything else from the board? If not?
I do have one more thing about the, if we could just revisit the picnic table idea just for a moment. Is it possible that, I don't know how many tables it would be, is it possible that there could be a person? We could hire a part-time or full-time person even to just, there'll probably be a couple of them because it'd have to be a couple of shifts. Someone to just hang out there and just clean those tables? I mean, it probably would be a good thing. That's one thing I've heard a lot of positive about, and then it just kind of faded because the restaurants didn't want to have to take responsibility for something that's across the street.
Mr. Suso? Did you want to speak to that?
We, we've had some discussions about that. Our preference would be not to create another category of town employees or seasonal employees, but to suggest that some type of contract cleaning could be explored. We would very much like to collaborate with the Chamber of Commerce, since the chamber would be acting on behalf of all the restaurant businesses benefited. And if we could collaborate with the chamber to oversee and manage that function, subject to the board's concurrence, I think we could secure some funding to make that happen on a contract basis.
Okay. We have, Mr. Jones?
There's also a comment about adding some tables to Village Green, which I think is a little bit distant, but maybe we could do some tables at the Town Hall Square.
So we can have this, I would say, you know, we can have this on an upcoming agenda, and I would really, and we'll certainly reach out and follow this up with the chamber. But I think it would be very helpful if the merchants and the business owners through the chamber really do some, you know, creative thinking and some consensus building so that we really have some buy-in around the process. Because otherwise, we're kind of going off in all these different directions. And I'd love to spare a repeat of this particular process, which required, you know, really a lot during a, during a situation where our two chiefs are dealing with COVID, with a lot of issues on the table, where DPW has many projects in place. A lot of time was sort of devoted to what we thought was something that was really being asked for and wasn't. So if we can get a little bit of clarity and more information from the businesses through the chamber. Sam?
Yeah, I'd like to move there. We rescind our street closing motion that we made on June 1st.
Okay, do I have a second?
Jones?
Okay. Thank you. All those by roll, sorry, any further discussion?
Do we want to really rescind or just kind of put it on hold until, who knows, we may get another wave of comments next week and think about it once more?
I think we can rescind it, and we can always bring it back. I mean, Frank and, Frank and Iri have done a lot of work to actually draft all of the language around it. So we have all of that there on the work that the chiefs have done at DPW, so.
Okay. So if we get an outpouring of letters, we can consider it again.
Or if something changes with the governor's mandate. So I have a motion and a second. All is in favor by roll call. Taylor?
Taylor, aye.
Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Jones?
Jones, aye.
Brown?
Brown, aye.
English Frogger, aye. Okay. Thank you all.
I wanted to actually use Doug Jones's idea though, because I think it makes a lot of sense to look at making the south side of Main Street a temporary parking only. And that would facilitate the delivery trucks, but it would also make it a little bit easier for people doing takeout, but for also people crossing the street to go over on the library lawn to sit at one of those picnic tables. It's just going to be a busy area, I think. And by making it temporary parking, it might just at least keep it moving and flexible. So I would, I would be, I'd like to make the motion that we at least consider doing that. Let's, let's put it out there. Just consider doing it, and then we'll see if it makes any sense in terms of public safety and some of the other logistics issues and-
Sam, are you comfortable if we put it on our next agenda so that we can suss out and get input? From, you know, I'm seeing already, we're getting input from certain business owners so that we can have a, you know, talk it through at another agenda item for an upcoming meeting?
Absolutely.
Mr. Suso?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to mention to the board, you may recall that Chief Dunn and I spoke to you about the parking issue downtown. You have a three-hour limit presently. We had suggested a shorter limit, which would encourage turnover, and the board might want to consider that as well, as opposed to the three-hour block of time. I just wanted to get that out there as further to look at.
Great. So we'll just have it all over, you know, we'll have a discussion about parking on Main Street at an upcoming meeting. And that way, for everybody who has logged on as a panelist, if you're listening, we're going to want, you know, that we're going to talk about that in an upcoming meeting. And I really hope people share their input in advance of that so that we can make a decision that's most beneficial. And just noting, I know Deb McGuire is saying that she's very disappointed with our decision. And I certainly, we feel that, Deb, that was one of the places that we had anticipated that particular road closure would benefit. And so we really do, you know, we really do feel that. And we hope that we can figure out another way to help support, you know, all the businesses, including Liam McGuire's. Okay, so let me move on to, do we have Iri and Frank or both or either? Okay.
They're available.
Okay. So Mr. Suso, if you just want to sort of address what we've done so far with outdoor business seating and temporary licensing and other issues, because they are a bit hand in hand. So if Mr. Suso, if you wanted to set the stage for what's been put together and what this board has taken a look at, that would be helpful. And then we can get any questions that we have for Iri.
Certainly, Madam Chair, members of the board, through the diligent, ongoing work of Town Council and Associate Town Council, who are with us, we're very gratified they're with us this evening as well. There's a package of, actually, three, three primary documents that are in the board's packet this evening. The first is a proposed select board procedure to approve temporary outdoor service for restaurants. And again, this is pursuant to the governor's most recent order, which we had been anxiously awaiting. The second document is for temporary administrative approval of outdoor restaurant service, again, pursuant to the relevant governor's order. And the last document is a temporary license agreement with the town of Falmouth to use a specific town of Falmouth sidewalks, closed roadways, and public property. And obviously, without a roadway closure at this point, the roadway portion would not apply, but certainly the sidewalk and any other public areas certainly would. And that would be for the use of, expansion of commercial operations due to limitations posed by COVID-19. And if, again, we have Town Council with us this evening to answer questions on those draft documents, the intent in preparing those is to, subject to the board's concurrence, to transmit those to all, all available businesses that would be affected by one or more of those documents, to allow them to review them and to transmit those to the town for the potential of expedited licensing and permitting, consistent with the governor's recent orders and certainly consistent, I know, with the intention of the select board as well. So there are, you also have attachments on copies of the governor's orders, various orders, as well as safety standards, and also checklist information. And I will also note, Madam Chair, that I believe with us as well this evening is Public Works Director Peter McConerty and Health Agent Scott McGann. Should questions come up, that would be helpful, to have them weigh in on.
Great, thank you. So what I want to first ask is, were there, I don't really want to read through all the details. You know, we can give a summary of what the process will be. Businesses, obviously, we are going to put this out through the chamber, through the various business associations and business groups in Falmouth. And the process will be spearheaded and organized through the Town Managers Department. So we don't want to go through all of the language. We would be here for a long time. But I want to ask first, was there anything from any members of the board that raised concern? Doug Jones?
The one question I still have, and I tried to read through this, understand the language, is if a restaurant is going to use their current parking area, and that's going to change the number of parking spaces they had, is there still a provision for them to be able to get that waiver as expeditiously as they're going to be for their liquor license?
Okay. Either Julian or Iri, do you want to speak to that? Or Frank, or whoever?
I'll defer to Town Council on those.
Iri? Iri drafted these documents, so I'll let her take the lead on it.
Okay.
So the Governor's Order Number 35 addressing Phase Two reopening provides for select boards to create a procedure for approving outdoor restaurant service, including outdoor seating. And as part of that, we have come up with what I would call a single unitary process. So part of that order allows select boards to essentially override local zoning requirements. That would include requirements for parking. There is provisions that are still, is still in the requirements that we have come up with in this proposed procedure, that handicapped parking, for example, be maintained, as well as other ADA accessibility requirements. So it is possible through this procedure for a restaurant that wanted to expand into its own parking lot to use a portion of that parking lot that would otherwise be required for parking spaces through this single town manager initiated review with input from other departments. So there would be no additional approval that was necessary.
Perfect. Thank you very much for the answer.
Great, thank you. Any other questions from the board?
Is there, I'm sorry, is there a sort of expected timeframe for turnaround of these applications? I know it's hard to say because it's a new process. Would you think maybe a week or so? Is that a guess? Good guess?
Mr. Suso?
My, yeah, our best estimate, again, we're, we're traveling on untraveled waters here, as the board's well aware. But I know, I also have another exhibit regarding time, timing considerations that I shared with the board late in the day that discusses a general anticipation. Again, it's only an estimate. The hope is that if we are able to share these documents tomorrow with all eligible businesses and that we begin to receive the fully completed forms. Again, businesses only need to deal with the forms that apply to their particular circumstance. But the thought is that those would be turned around in the coming work week. Selectman Brown, and hopefully by, you know, by the end of that week, which, what is it, the first of the week is the 8th? So by that Friday would be the hope. But again, what, what it requires is that we have full applications in. If they come in piecemeal or not fully, without full information, to make the kind of determination that is required in the governor's orders and directive, we'll have to get back to the businesses and have them supplement. So that could delay things. But if all goes well and we have full applications, we think those will be completed within a week and perhaps less.
But it did seem to be a pretty, pretty simple application with just your number of seats, your liquor license, and your, all the information that people already have. So I wanted to share that with business owners that are watching. Didn't look very difficult, so.
Correct. I think the goal was, and I think the Town Council has done an excellent job keeping it really quite straightforward so that it is not another onerous task for businesses in the midst of this. We do have a question from Kevin Clower. Will properties that have existing site plan review decisions need to separately modify those decisions? Or will they be covered under the new approval from the Town Manager's Office? Iri?
They will be covered within that single unified process. There's no need to go back to the planning board for site plan review.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions, comments from anyone?
Yes, I think part of this application really needs to be a site sketch of where they're going to locate tables so that there's at least some assurances that the distances that are being prescribed by the governor's orders are going to be met by their plan.
I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but I do think there is a component of a sketch. Am I incorrect? I thought there was a requirement of a sketch, a visual.
So if you turn to Section 2 of the application, and also it's reflected in the procedure document itself as well, there is a requirement for both a detailed description and either a sketch or a plan. And there's a significant number of components that need to go into that sketch, not merely just the outline of a building and the outline of tables. There's elements like pedestrian access, curb cuts, ingress and egress, existing parking spaces, handicap parking spaces, et cetera. So the, both the procedure document and the application specify exactly what needs to be in that detailed sketch in order for all the relevant departments to assess whether it's safe, healthy, and appropriate to permit the proposal.
And I didn't want it to sound too simple. It seems to me there's a fair amount of detail that needs to be submitted.
Yeah, I mean, I think it strikes a nice balance between, obviously, we have, we still have regulations and rules that we have to make sure, you know, it's safe and it's ADA compliant and, and, you know, comes to, into compliance with everything the governor has mandated. But at the same time, the goal in the government- But at the same time, the goal in the governor's executive order that we have, you know, we've really been advocating as a board for so long now, you know, to our legislators, to the governor, was for this expedited process. So I think what Iri and Frank have come up with is really a nice balance between making sure that we are still doing due diligence, but it can be something that you don't need to hire an attorney or a firm, an engineering firm, to put this together. You really should be able to do this yourself. And so I, I do see a question. Beth Colt is asking about where the application is. Beth, if we vote on it, it will be on the town's website and it will be available. We're also going to be sending it out to the Chamber of Commerce. Julian, did I miss one?
Yeah, Madam Chair, we'll be trans, we'll be transmitting the full package to all eligible businesses tomorrow, subject to the board's vote tonight.
Great, thank you.
And we have another question, how long will these last? This will run through November 1st, I believe, correct?
The authority, the authority that the select board has under Order 35, the Phase Two reopening order, extends either until November 1st or that order is rescinded. So that's the length of the permanent authorization that we can give. Although depending on the procedure that you approve and/or input from staff, it could determine if it was appropriate to have shorter approvals than that. There's nothing that requires us to go to November 1st, but we are not legally allowed to go past either November 1st or when this is rescinded.
Right, when the governor's particular executive order is rescinded.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. And I also think someone was asking about how long, was it, was that gentleman asking about how long the process was going to be? I'm sorry, I missed one here. I think he was, yes, can you repeat the timeline again? And yes, John, it doesn't have your last name here, but yes, looking to try to be able to get that done by Friday the eighth, excuse me, by Friday after the eighth. Yes, that is correct. Yes, so the, John, the eighth, that right now, none of this is in effect because restaurants haven't even been allowed to have seating yet. We are still waiting for the governor on the eighth to make that order. So we are anticipating he's going to do that, but until he does that, none of this can come into effect. So we are taking the applications and we're reviewing them based on, on our, you know, our hope and our anticipation that the governor will make the announcement on Monday that in fact restaurants can start doing sit-down service. So that, that is, we really can't do anything before that date, other than take these applications and start to process them. Okay, anything else? Mr. Peter Johnson stopped, did I miss any other comment? Okay, hold on, I see another one. This question is, does the mandate clearly state how far the tables can be from parking spot or the street? Iri?
There we go, sorry, I couldn't unmute myself. I was in the wrong window. So the Order 35 does not specifically contain any direction on that issue. And our procedure is drafted so that that assessment can be made based on particular properties as to what would be safe, whether those parking spaces are open or not open. So whether a section of a parking lot is closed, whether a section of a roadway is closed. We've obviously talked about that earlier in the meeting. So those assessments would be made through the Town Managers Office with feedback from various appropriate departments, including Public Safety, et cetera.
If I, if I read it correctly, though, there is a requirement for some delineation that runs around the outside of that seating area. Am I incorrect, Iri?
Particularly for any restaurant serving alcohol. The ABCC does require that the area be enclosed. They describe anything from a rope all the way up to a fence or a barrier. And so in the application, we are requesting that people specifically identify what they are proposing to use for an enclosure. There may also be other input from, for example, the Health Department as it relates to food service preparation and cleaning, that they would prefer to have an eating area enclosed and separated from the public. So that would be, again, feedback that would be looked at on a case-by-case basis.
Okay, yes, Julian?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I just, I want, wanted to underscore a comment that Iri just made, particularly for anyone listening, that the process we're going to follow is when a completed application is received, it's going to be routinely reviewed from all the critical town departments, Public Safety, Public Works, Planning, Zoning. They're all going to be given the courtesy, building obviously very important, the courtesy of an opportunity to review and comment, similar to what we do with all special event requests prior to bring them, bringing them back to the board, the select board for action. So that will be underway. And so all those who apply need to understand that this is a process that has several checkpoints. They're all internal. It will be overseen by the Town Managers Office to ensure that things move forward expeditiously. But a number of eyes, as is appropriate, are going to check on it and make certain that it can be done safely and in a health and san, healthy and sanitary way. And I don't, certainly don't want to forget my colleague, Health Agent Scott McGann, who will be closely involved in this as well.
Great, thank you, Julian. Okay, any other questions for, okay, let me just read the, I apologize for the choppy nature, but I really do want to get all the comments, questions that people have in. Excuse me, from Kelly. Will you allow a tent canopy on property or will that be a separate permit? And let me just put this other question in from Jiller016. Are we allowed to put the same amount of tables as our occupancy as long as the social distancing guidelines are abided by, or is that reduced? Iri, can you speak to either of those, both of those, whatever you're comfortable doing?
So taking the first one, the governor's order does actually specify some requirements for tents. Those can be permitted through this single unitary process and would be part of the description of what an applicant is proposing to do. But the requirements in the governor's order is that the, sorry, I think I
You're good now.
Messed up my audio, okay.
We heard the whole first part of that.
Okay, great. The requirement in the governor's order is that 50% of the side areas of a tent be unobstructed. So one of the requirements is that it not be a fully walled tent for the obvious reason of, that would basically turn it into an inside location. So there are some requirements that applicants would need to consult in the DPH guidelines about how open the tent or canopy needs to be. But that is approved, that can, if, if this procedure is approved, it would be able to be part of the overall application. Turning to the second question, the procedure is drafted so that no approved restaurant outdoor seating would exceed the existing indoor capacity that somebody is permitted for. It's also written so that if indoor dining restarts at any point under order of the governor, that whatever is not being used outside can be used inside, but in no case would a restaurant end up with like 150% of what they originally had. Although it also notes that what is approved outdoors would be based on what is safe to have. So there's no guarantee that any restaurant would be approved for 100%, of its existing indoor capacity in an outdoor area. It would just depend on what the safety issues were.
Great, we have another question about tents. I think you've somewhat answered, but they're asking about temporary tents for rain only. If you just want to speak to that, I think if, yeah, if you could just speak to it. My guess is that they have to refer back to what the governor noted about tents in general, but go ahead.
Yes, so all tents would have to comply with the governor's order, whether they're temporary or permanent. And again, that would be a detail that would be great to include in the application to describe that you don't want to have this up all the time. But if there was rain, then you would put it up. Some, some of the pop-up ones are a bit more maneuverable than a, you know, pavilion tent.
Great, thank you. Any other questions from the board? Okay, let me just see. Okay, this is something separate, but I'll just read it in. In future agenda, can you address the possibility, possibility of occupancy numbers due to companies like Uber or Lyft even taxied as we are a tourist town and a good number of guests use that source of transport? Okay, I would just ask John maybe to just clarify. I know sometimes when we're trying to type quickly, things don't come out clearly. If you could just clarify in the chat what you'd like me to include, include on the agenda in the future. I don't quite understand that, but if you include it, I will definitely review it. Anything else from the board? So I do think that we need, I just want to say thank you, Iri, Frank as well, but Frank said Iri drafted it, so I'm going to really praise Iri. This is a lot of work. Governor just came out with this information middle of last week. So to, to take it all in and look at it, it's, it's a lot. And then to create a unified process for businesses that both comports with what the governor requires, what DPH would require, what we would require as a town, but also is, you know, fairly user-friendly for the applicants. No small feat, we've never done anything like this, so thank you so much. I think it was incredibly thorough and detailed. And for the process to basically a one-stop shopping for applicants to come through the Town Managers Office would be really helpful. So any other thoughts? If not, we need to vote to accept this as drafted?
We move that we accept and adopt this as drafted.
Patterson, second.
Okay, any further discussion? Mr. Suso?
Madam Chair, you have a draft motion from Town Council of Frank Duffy, which we would encourage the board to consider due to the fact that this is still a work in progress and subject to further change both from the governor and the legislature.
Great, does someone have that right in front of them who could read that?
I have it.
You made the motion, go ahead.
So from Town Council, Thursday, June 4th, 2020, motion. I move the Town Manager be authorized to act on behalf of the board when acting as the local licensing authority for alcoholic beverages licenses and common victual licenses to approve temporary amendments to the license premises for restaurants to allow for outdoor service and to accommodate the provisions of the order of the governor of the Commonwealth, COVID-19 Order Number 35 dated June 1st, 2020. And further, that the Town Manager be authorized to approve temporary amendments or changes to the license premises for restaurants described in any special permit or variance issued under general laws, C48, or the zoning bylaw of the town of Falmouth, to allow for outdoor service and to accommodate the provisions of the order of the governor described above.
And it's Patterson, second.
Okay, great. And so no further, seeing no further discussion, by roll call, Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Taylor?
Taylor, aye.
Jones?
Jones, aye.
Brown?
Brown, aye.
English Frogger, aye. Okay, is there anything else, Mr. Suso? Did you want to just raise the issue? Yes, go ahead.
Yes, Madam Chair, if, if it would be agreeable, I would like to, and perhaps we could even put it on the screen, because I know the, the board had not seen this until late this afternoon. But we have a, a timing consideration for the downtown restaurant reopening, and it also includes some information on the anticipated milling and overlay of the long-scarred section of downtown roadway with the patches for the waterline repairs that are, and waterline connections that are nearly complete, but not quite yet complete. If we could put that on the screen, and I would ask our Public Works Director Peter McConerty, if he could also be brought in to join us. And Madam Chair, if it's your pleasure, I'd like to have Peter McConerty have the opportunity to comment on that as well.
Absolutely, thank you.
I don't know if you'd like me to read through this, Madam Chair, but I'd be happy to do so.
If you would, only because depending on what people are looking, viewing this on, it can be kind of small. So if you want to just read this draft as it pertains to what we were talking about with opening of businesses and, and the repaving, so go ahead.
Will do, thank you. Yes, again, these are timing considerations for downtown restaurant reopening, presented to the board this evening. Several bullet points, the first, anticipate beginning to receive outdoor restaurant seating and alternative permitting applications tomorrow, which is Friday, June 5th. That is based upon the vote that the board just completed, authorizing us to use these documents and proceed in the manner we've outlined. Also, I need to note that we anticipate, no guarantee yet, but anticipate Governor Baker giving what I call the green light for outdoor seating at the earliest on Monday, June 8th. Now, the governor recently reaffirmed that he's not going to issue that judgment call until Saturday morning. So Saturday morning, June 6th, we will hear from the governor as to whether outdoor seating and business, restaurant business operations related to it can begin on that Monday, this coming Monday. Continuing with bullet points, those restaurants with existing permitted outdoor seating, not requiring further review or special permitting, can then proceed with outdoor service on their premises as of June 8th. Again, consistent with, and subject to the, the governor issuing that order. Next, restaurants seeking any new outdoor seating and related permits. Those are the permits, of course, we've just discussed and you've just approved, licenses and permit procedure. They will submit all required application materials and receive an expedited internal review with permits anticipated to be issued June, in the week of June 8th and actually through June 17th, which is about a seven or eight working day period. The reason for the caution is that, as we've noted earlier, we do need to have the applications complete. To begin a review with incomplete materials is not going to allow us to come to closure. So it's really critical that we have that. And as I've already noted, the packet of all materials will be transmitted to all eligible businesses from the Town Manager and Selectmen's Office tomorrow. With the, moving on to the next piece, which I welcome my colleague Peter McConerty to join me on. With the imminent completion of remaining waterline cross-connection, that would be occurring during the coming week. The planned downtown road milling and resurfacing will, will require a two-to-three-day process. Milling is anticipated to begin Monday, June 15th, weather conditions permitting. Resurfacing, which is the next step, of course, is anticipated to occur on Tuesday, June 16th, weather conditions permitting. The next bullet point is not applicable since the board has vacated or abandoned your planned roadway closure, but that would have occurred on the following date with therefore the adjacent restaurant use of closed roadways for table placement and serving beginning on Thursday, June 18th. So it gives us the opportunity to talk about the planned milling and overlay through the downtown area. And Peter McConerty, if you're available, I'd welcome your commenting on that, Madam Chair, if that's agreeable.
Looks like we temporarily lost our chair. Peter McConerty is here on the call.
Peter, if you would, give us your description of that, you're certainly welcome.
Yep, thank you, Julian. Good evening, Peter McConerty, Director of Public Works. Just wanted to confirm the milling and paving of Main Street. The milling and paving of Main Street, the initial portion of it was for three days. That was for the area that was going to be blocked off between Shore Street and Walker Street was where we were talking. The actual plan with the, with the Watermain project and with the milling and paving is the Watermain work is expected to be completed on Tuesday of this coming week. And Lawrence Lynch Corp. will be starting paving. They're looking at starting paving up at Queens Byway and coming down North Main Street and then coming down West Main Street up from Walker Street towards the Green. And that will be Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday of next week. And then up to the Green towards Town Hall. And then the following week, which would be the 15th, would be 15th, would be milling and paving from Shore Street to Town Hall, 16th milling, 17th paving. So the paving operations basically would be shutting down Main Street in portions from next Tuesday until the following Tuesday, Wednesday timeframe, weather-dependent. So I just, with, with the licensing that's going forward and the dates that are going forward, I just, I don't want to be, if, if we're in the, in the middle of the roadway with machines and we're milling and paving, it's going to be actual construction operations during that timeframe. So I just wanted to, to put that out there. We, we worked out with our contractors over the last week to set up the operations and we finalized it this afternoon, so they're getting prepared for it. So it would be paving of Main Street, West Main Street, and Walker Street. So it would be paving of Main Street, West Main Street and Locust Street starting next Tuesday continuing on for approximately a week until the following Tuesday, which would be the 16th or 17th.
Doug, I think you're muted.
Is that something?
Still muted, Doug.
Is that something that we need to vote on here to authorize tonight, or is that something that you've already had planned?
Well, that is planned to go forward, but it has been part of the, you know, two, two and a half year Watermain project with the very able assistance of Peter McConerty and the great progress that's been made in that work, also with the assistance of Water Superintendent Steve Rafferty. We are in a position that we really did not anticipate to be in, and that is to, if we can go forward with the timetable that Peter has just negotiated and proposed to be able to essentially restore all areas of Main Street to their, to a really pristine condition to really allow this reopening of restaurants to launch in a considerably more positive way as a result, so it doesn't necessarily have to be voted on, Mr. Vice Chair, but we certainly would welcome the sentiment of the board and if it came in the form of vote, that would be welcome as well. Because it all involves a roadway, that's certainly going to affect downtown, but certainly it's not going to be a negative element for sidewalks, a little bit of inconvenience from time to time potentially on carryout operations is unavoidable, but again, as Peter McConerty has outlined, if we are able to go forward with this timetable, we will be out of that area if all goes well by the 17th or the 18th, that Wednesday or Thursday. Again, weather permitting and then let the summer begin with a pristine roadway which is so well deserved by all downtown merchants and residents of town of Falmouth.
Would be in favor of continuing, I think there's not much action down there right now, although we're having the opening on Monday. I don't think people are going to really be ready to go on Monday. So I would be for it.
In just, so after the milling and paving operations are going to be completed on the 17th, Public Works and our painting crews will be going back in and putting in all the striping and crosswalks and detail work.
It seems to me like this is a way to get it done while we're already in a shutdown mode. People may be coming up with accepted permit variations, but let's get it out of the way and hope that in the fall we have a much more open environment for businesses to make up for some of the losses that they've incurred and we understand it pretty draconian.
I realize this is but there's just no way we could get it done next, at the end of next week instead, so that most restaurants aren't going to be doing anything much until next Friday or Saturday anyway. There's just no way we could push it a little bit faster and have it done actually before the 15th.
So, so the plan is, is they're still working on Watermain connections on Main Street, they were doing basically yesterday, this is, this is Thursday, Tuesday, yesterday and today. They'll continue Monday and Tuesday and then milling operations will commence, so the plan was the end of next week would be an awful tight schedule. There could be a possibility I could redirect the contractor to, instead of starting at the Green and moving east as they start at Shore Street and move towards the Green. But they're looking, either way, they're still looking at a good solid week to get the, to get the milling and paving done. Main Street between the trenches and the crown of the road, they really need to mill it out to get that, to bring that profile of the roadway back. So there's no way around to get around the milling of it.
And could I just, piggyback on that as well? I think the risk that we run, subject to Peter's concurrence, of course, the risk we run by trying to fast track it even by a couple of days is if things would be delayed in an unanticipated way, we could end up with a weekend in which the roadway is closed or very difficult to maneuver because of the milling operation happened, but the resurfacing had to be delayed, so we can avoid the potential for a very difficult weekend when merchants could be operating more effectively by taking it up on Monday, the 15th and wrapping it up by midweek.
Right, we would not have it, right, you would not have a rough surface over the weekend.
I'm just thinking that right now weekends don't seem to matter as much as weekday, I mean, it's not the, we're just in a very different schedule. And I'm not sure a weekend is all that different than a week right now.
Just go ahead, Peter, I just want to read in some, I just want to read in some comments after you're done, Peter.
No, I would say, I would say most likely Lawrence Lynch would be working Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, possibly Friday. And then on that following Monday, to allow for the weekend, the following Monday would start in with the milling operations coming the other way from Shore Street. That was the plan of this afternoon when the, when the closure was, was a possibility. But even so, it's still, either they come from the east or they come from the west, it's still going to take that, that amount of timeframe.
So we're getting a comment, I'll just chime in because I know Megan's having some technical difficulties with the phone. The Pickle Jar comment is, geez, we're gonna, we're just trying to survive on takeout, closing the street will kill us. Can't wait till fall. And I know I had asked Mr. Suso to look into whether or not we could improve the street prior to this closure idea. I was kind of thinking it was just going to be, you know, just filling in the divots and the low spots, but we're so close to doing the full, full fix, I guess I can see why you'd want to. Wasn't really what I had anticipated in my request, but I can, I can understand the reasoning because you're so close.
And if I could just join in a little bit, that also with that, that the paving of Main Street and the milling of Main Street, that's part of the Watermain contract. If we add trench repair or surface repair, that's not part of the Watermain contract, so that would be additional work, additional scheduling through the contract or additional funds. But this paving, the way we're going to do it, it's part of the Watermain contract, so we just push it forward.
So I guess if I could ask a question, this is Megan, sorry, I don't have, I don't have video, but maybe I missed what yours, when you were talking about it, Peter, but can we speak to that concern that the folks from Pickle Jar are raising? Is it something that can wait until the fall because it is part of the project? I know we were pushing it forward, trying to see about smoothing the road up, but when we were thinking about trying to open the road up, you know, for the season, is it something that can get pushed back to the fall? And I apologize if you've already said this.
So over the past couple of weeks, we've been really putting a lot of, because of the work that we've been putting forward to see if we can close down sections of Main Street, we've been putting a lot of pressure on our contractor, contractor to get to this point, and to this point, he's been playing along pretty well and we've done a lot of work to get to this point. I, I, Main Street is rough, we've got a lot of complaints on Main Street, people driving down Main Street and hitting the trenches, hitting the patches. It would be preferable for us to get in there and get it out of the way. It, basically when it's completed, it's going to look like the Queens Byway area that was just completed, it'll be all brand new black pavement. Crosswalks will pop, the parking spaces are going to pop, it's going to be, it'll be complete, it'll look it'll be complete, it's going to be really a nice area of downtown to have that completed instead of having multiple trenches going across the roads all the way from the Green all the way out to Shore Street. This, the area that we're talking about for paving is just from Shore Street down to the Green and up Locust Street towards, towards West Main Street.
Any other questions from the board? Any other comments that we've missed, I think we've read all the ones that have been entered in. So, Mr. Suso, you don't, do you need a vote from us on this, or you just wanted to?
A vote, a formal vote is not required, if the board prefers to vote, certainly welcome it. I think this final product is going to encourage people to come downtown and to restore things to as close to normalcy as soon as possible. And I think this is the, you know, the icing on the cake in my view and recognizing that it may involve, you know, a very, very minor amount of delay, but it's not going to prevent people from coming downtown. We'll just have to access restaurants temporarily, maybe for a day or so or a portion of that. But again, it's unfettered and, and fully completed and put all that behind us and and open this new chapter in restaurant success, it would be our hope.
And obviously the idea is to get it done before sort of that July real true kickoff when, you know, when families who come down are really down here, because I know kids are still, I know they're doing it virtually, but kids are still in school in the Commonwealth. We know, you know, for our purposes here in town, things generally kick off at that end part of June and then into July, so the goal would be to have all of that obviously done in advance of that.
Yes, correct.
Okay, does anyone feel that we need to vote, I mean, it's just a draft and then it's a continuation of the milling project that's already underway, I don't know that there's any particular motion or a vote that is required unless someone feels strongly.
We might as well vote so people know who to complain to.
Okay, so what would, what would you want to vote on?
I move that we allow Public Works to continue with the milling and repaving of Main Street.
Patterson, second.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, all those by roll call, Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Taylor?
Taylor, aye.
Jones?
Jones, aye.
Brown?
Brown, aye.
Thank you.
Great, thank you, anything else? Mr. Suso, I think we've covered everything that was on the agenda, yes, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I would, I would like to take a moment as town manager to acknowledge the extraordinary work of both Chief Dunn and Chief Small, but also our Public Works Director Peter McConerty. I have spent many hours with each of these three gentlemen. They have also spent considerable time in preparation for potential road closure, reviewing options, working through potential problems, troubleshooting and working through some creative concepts that we've been working on. And that was in preparation for, you know, providing sufficient information to this board so that you could make the decision you're most comfortable with. Regardless of what that decision was on Monday night or is tonight, it was all in preparation for providing you with the information you needed to make an informed decision, so I really want to acknowledge and thank my three colleagues for their tireless work there, and I know we've also thanked Frank Duffy and Irie Mullen for their great work and I want to thank them as well. And thank you to members of the board for waiting through an extraordinary amount of challenging material and information. Obviously, we are treading new ground here and it's a pleasure to be able to work with professionals and provide you the information to support what you need to do.
Thank you, well said.
I'd just like to second that and say thank you to all the staff for responding so effectively during this whole time period, because I don't know what other towns are doing, but I'm pretty proud of the way you guys have functioned. Pretty, pretty well done.
Thank you.
Well said, and for folks watching, you know, again, as I said on Monday, it's really an ongoing conversation and that's what we want it to be, we want to hear from folks, it was very helpful to, for us to hear from individuals. You know, albeit sort of after our vote, it was still helpful to have that communication. That's what this is about, it's going to require ongoing adjustments, it's going to require ongoing responses, so we're going to continue to look at issues around parking and potential picnic tables and use of other space, so you know, we do hope that we hear from individuals if they have thoughts or criticism or creative ideas, Sam?
I just want to encourage the town to come up with some sort of a draft proposal on the picnic table issue, I mean, we just heard from Deb McGuire. And we give some kind of accommodation for those people that don't have any ability to put outside tables in. But it would be nice if we could at least show them a plan of something that we think we could actually provide so they could begin to formulate their thought.
Yes, Sam, excellent, we're going to do that, and we will also talk about the issue of, you know, particular some pickup parking zones for takeout, we will have both of those items and some, some work put into both of those items for our upcoming agenda. Okay, anything else?
We adjourn, Jones?
Do I have a second?
Second, Patterson.
Okay, all those by roll call, Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Taylor?
Taylor, aye.
Jones?
Jones, aye.
Brown?
Brown, aye.
English Braga, aye, thank you all, really appreciate it, thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.